Hanging out with us. We're going to finish tonight. We're starting the executive session as of 11:19. Now, I am going to ask, if all possible, it's late, that if we could finish these applications and be done by midnight, I think all of us will be happy. If we can't, then we'll need to set up a continuing meeting. Okay? Moving forward, the first thing, the first two petitions are in continuance, so now we're at the 955 Ferry Boulevard. I'll need a motion to take it off the table.
Madam Chair, I'll take 955 Ferry off the table.
Got it. I think it's Mr. Fuller and Ms. Peppin. It's good. Okay, this was the UB Dockside or Erstätt Middle Dockside for the boat. Mr. Fuller.
I'll make a motion to approve this with the same stipulations we placed on the previous petition. It's a much better site, it's a much better use, they've taken a lot of tendered love and care of this. It's a technicality that's before us again as a zoning petition, so I'm in full endorsement of this. I'm inclined to vote yes on this with the stipulations as a previous petition.
Okay, there will be some more. Mr. Hibansky's got a few stipulations that are standard that he will add, but is there a second?
I second.
And Ms. Peppin, any discussion?
I just have one question or discussion. As far as signage, I feel also that they're gonna go by the regulations for signage, but you know, looking at that building, if I was to come into Stratford, I'd want to know like what that building is.
You talking about something on the roof?
No, 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 not on the roof, but some form of signage, and they're gonna do that anyway, and they're gonna comply with whatever.
I think, yeah, they have...
But don't you think so?
Absolutely. No, I...
If I went by a big property like that and just saw a building, I'd say, well, what is that?
They do have the ability to do signage currently within the regulations.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
They already do.
And they said that they would abide.
They already do. If they want to go above and beyond what is in the regulations, they can come back with an application for us to consider. But they're not left with a blank building. They do have the ability to put signage.
Well, and I think they will. I don't think they'll just leave it blank.
Mr. Paul.
Madam Chair, I have a question on the deck that they're gonna have out there. Should there be anything from a standpoint of capacity for that uses of that deck? I'm just concerned that, you know, is there's gonna be some overflow over there maybe without any kind of control?
The Fire Marshal didn't mention that, but I'll ask Mr. Hibansky, is there generally a deck, a capacity associated to a deck?
It has to be built to building code.
Yeah.
I mean, generally...
And it's not gonna be that high off the ground, I mean...
It has to be built to building code, and whatever the building department determines is safe occupancy on it, that would be also determined in conjunction with the fire department. But that would all be covered during the permitting process.
Okay.
Mr. Hibansky, could you read the stipulations for...
Sure. A letter from the town engineer expressing satisfaction with the plans, and any plans shall be updated prior to applying for a zoning compliance in a building permit application. I would copy that and also make another condition that we get a letter of satisfaction from the conservation administrator. And compliant, third would be compliance with the MS4 stormwater permit, which they're aware of that they need compliance with already. They mentioned it tonight.
That's it?
That's it.
Mr. Fuller, are you accepting those stipulations?
Madam Chair, as the first motion, I'll accept all those stipulations.
And I second.
Second. If there's no other questions or stipulations, I'll call it to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Anybody opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, now we're gonna go to the next application, 382 Ferry Boulevard. Is there a motion to take it off the table?
I make a motion, take...
By Ms. Peppin, is there a second? Okay, just don't jump up for a second. Is there a second?
Oh, to take off the table. I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller.
Madam Chair, this is the one that I wanted to get a ruling on.
Hold on one second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, your turn.
Madam Chair, I want to get a ruling from our attorney regarding my possibility of recusing myself from voting on this one.
Mr. Florrick.
Yes, I remember the issue vaguely now. I think that you had written a piece in which you advocated a moratorium on TOD projects, and in response, I think more of a cautionary opinion as opposed to a prohibition. We advised that in any such applications, it might be wiser for you to recuse yourself. You certainly, I'm not gonna tell you to recuse yourself, if you think you can look at the issue honestly, openly, and you state that on the record, you're gonna be the best judge of that. Our advice that you recuse yourself, as I said, is more cautionary because in these applications that at least have the possibility of heading to litigation, you don't want to give someone an appealable issue if you don't have to. So whether there's an absolute right or an absolute wrong, I just don't think you need to give someone an appealable issue. Having said that, if you feel strongly enough about sitting and you feel that you can judge it fairly and independently, I'm not gonna stand in your way.
Point of order, Madam Chairwoman. We are not asking the commissioner to recuse himself.
We understood, but I understand that, and you don't have access. It's really Mr. Paul's decision.
Okay, thank you. Now, I'm always one to listen to legal advice and perceptions of everything, so I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay, so it'd be noted that Mr. Paul has recused himself. Okay, and Mr. Rieguskas will be making that vote and decision in his place. Okay? Mr. Rieguskas, any questions? Any thoughts? Well, we're opening it up for some discussion. It's been motion and it's been second. Discussion. Ms. Peppin?
Yeah, I just think that the developer has gone over and beyond, meeting with the neighbors. I think that it meets all the regulations. I know we have consideration on the neighborhood and how the development looks in the neighborhood, but I think at this point, I'm in favor of the project.
Okay. Anybody else next, or we'll go down the line? Mr. Fuller, any thoughts?
I'm not next in line, Madam Chair.
Excuse me?
I'm not next in line.
You're not next in line. Oh, Mr. Rieguskas.
Not sure how the line goes, but okay.
I just started at the beginning. It's zigzag, yeah. Everybody's gonna get a chance.
I understand.
Madam Chair, just before Mr. Rieguskas goes, I'm not gonna vote, but I will have a chance to speak, won't I?
No, you will not.
Can you even speak?
If you recuse yourself, you remove yourself from all the proceedings.
I did enough talking there.
This is a very difficult one. I do applaud Mr. Owen for making some changes. I, as I'm looking at it, it's still a very dense addition to that neighborhood, and that is something that we have to keep in mind as we make these decisions. I'm about 10 feet away from one of my fellow commissioners here, and if that was a three-story building instead, that's not a big distance. And there's gotta be some way somehow of taking into account how this fits into the middle of the neighborhood, because it really is in the middle. It's just right there. The building on Ferry Boulevard, I know some people don't like going to five stories on that, but Ferry Boulevard is a state highway, it's going to get very busy if they do this whole interchange. It's the part that's in the back that is wedged between houses on this side, houses on this side.
Could you be just a little more specific? Building C, Building B, just so we can keep up with you?
The two in the back, B and C. So B especially, because that's right up against people's property lines. Building C, that's fine. I mean, I don't know if there are things to look at, making an extra story back on that and getting rid of Building B. I'm not sure what if anything else is possible. I'm just, and I understand what the neighbor, the one person who spoke in favor of this was. Don't throw out the good looking for the perfect. I totally get that concept. I'm just not sure this quite makes it to good.
Okay, we're still discussing, so we'll come back around. Mr. Fuller.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is definitely one that we really have to take a lot of care and consideration to, because as much as it's TOD, it's also a Section 20 application, a special case application. So that to me is what I really use to judge and guide this. From a strict TOD perspective, this hits all the benchmarks. There is an attempt at commercial or professional office use. It is density housing near a major thoroughfare. It does encourage walking and biking and outdoor recreation. So from a TOD perspective alone, it satisfies all those requirements, so I don't see a problem with it in terms of TOD. It's tough to speculate what's gonna happen with that traffic light. The state might move it, the state might keep it, the state might adjust the timing of it, the state might do the rectangular rapid pedestrian RRFP onomatopoeia, whatever it's called, to stall and block traffic. What I'm really taking a look at now is when in relation to a special case, does this fit into the neighborhood? And I think it is an honest attempt to try to do that, I really do, because you have the tapering off of the stories. You go from five stories down to, even though it's two stories residential, it's three stories in actuality. So that's much better. The really tricky part is that 10-foot buffer by Building B, but I don't know how they could fit that in otherwise. And here's the other thing I have to consider too, and while we're still in discussion, I haven't made up my mind yet on whether I'm for this or against this, or I really want to hear other stipulations that might come into play for me to really help me make my decision. But I do see this ultimately as an honest attempt to work with the neighborhood. It's something we haven't really seen too many from a lot of developers, other than maybe the gentleman on Hamilton Ave. So I give it a lot of credit there. The other question I'm looking at is, is this the best we're gonna see? And it certainly was better in the previous incarnation, it certainly was better in that, and you don't know what other sort of petition may come. And what I see with this, which puts me kind of leaning in favor of it, is that you do have now a tapering off, which does insulate a neighborhood, which does provide some buffer to a neighborhood. Ferry Boulevard's gonna be dense. However you're gonna develop Ferry Boulevard, whether it's commercial or residential, mixed use, even light industrial, there are some MAs on Ferry Boulevard, you're gonna have people, you're gonna have traffic of some kind, and Ferry Boulevard can handle that. We may not necessarily know with certain lights, but when you're looking at such a tapering off like that, it is an attempt to buffer a neighborhood, and that's the real challenge of TOD, is not the core of the TOD, it's the periphery of the TOD, where this location is. And you really want to have kind of like what we do with LB zones, kind of have a buffer sort of development to kind of insulate neighborhoods. So what I'm worried is if we do go no of this, one, we better have a very good reason to vote no on it, and two, what else are we gonna open up that property to? If we start limiting and limiting and limiting development options, is it ever gonna get developed, or is it gonna get developed in a way that may not, which might be even more harmful for a neighborhood? And that's a decision we all have to take a look in the mirrors and figure out what's the best course. Is it perfect? No, but it's honest, and I'll leave it at that.
We'll come back around, and I think everyone will have a chance to think about if they are leaning yes, what would make it a yes, if you're leaning no, you know, if that's a solid no. We need to be, as best we can, articulate where we want to go with this, because we will make a decision hopefully tonight. Mr. Giuliano?
Yeah, like you say, it's a hair puller. You could tell, I don't have much left, but I just, you know, it's all legal, the builder did the best they could, I don't want to drag this out anymore, it's late. I just have a problem with the intensity on that neighborhood. I have issues with, I'm speaking for myself, but I'm sure other people might kind of agree, this whole TOD thing needs to be regrouped, but that's where I stand on that, and I'm really leaning, not ready for it at this time of the application.
I think we went through Mr., yeah. My thoughts on it are, and I could reiterate the words that Mr. Fuller had almost exactly. I hadn't made up my mind on it one way or the other. There are many elements of it that I do like. I do like the direction that the developer went, I like the changes that have been made since the first application was presented. I recognize that it may not be perfect. Perfect would probably be something that no one would be actually happy with, depending on where your perspective is. What else happens if we say no? I'm concerned about what the next application would look like. Does it get worse? Does it get better? And here we have an applicant who has made an attempt to try to work with the neighborhood in a better application. When I think about what would make me feel more of a yes, and I have moved my position actually listening tonight, I kept a very open mind. I initially had some concerns about Ferry Boulevard and Building A and the height. As I listened and thought about the arguments, I agreed with many of the positions that were made, and I have less concerns now with the height of Building A and the five stories. But what I have moved towards is a concern more with Building B. And what would make me move closer to a yes would be one less floor or less units. It would address the density issue, and it would also address some of the neighbors' concerns that were brought forward about the closeness. I do not see there's going to be a way to affect the setback. You know, I'm not that type of an engineer, but there's enough common sense for me to look at it and say, unless we do a whole new design of something, and even then, I don't see how we're gonna do it. But I would like to also leave an open mind as I talk to the other commissioners and hear your thoughts, but I will share with you that's where my mind is moving in this direction. All the other elements, certainly I want to work on the traffic. The traffic is a great concern to me, and I think we can, as a board and as a town, address the traffic. That should not be a condition of the applicant. I appreciate whatever help that they can provide. Ms. Peppin?
I think the setback is the main problem here now. I think that setback of 10, 10 feet or something seems to be, but you're not gonna get, if that's still in regulation, you're not gonna, unless you move that whole building.
And I don't think it's, yeah, I don't think that's necessary.
And I think that that's jeopardizing, you know, that's putting more on the builder that, or the, you know, the, that he loses a whole building.
No, I'm not recommending moving the building at all. I'm actually stating the obvious, which is you really can't do much about the setback.
And also the traffic study, you know, we've, you know, had so many petitions with traffic studies and, you know, and the experts that come up say one thing, and then everybody else says another.
And we know different, yeah.
We have to make a judgment here. They're the experts. They may not live there, I understand that, but they're the experts.
Pointed. So I'm gonna go back around, because we're not yet close enough to a decision. I can see it on the faces. Mr. Rieguskas, you want to take another swing at it?
Well, I wish I was seeing something clear and obvious, but if there were, it probably would have been done, looking at Building B. I do think that that would be a huge step to take a story off. I'm not sure that that's something that they would be interested in, the developer, that is. I remember when I asked at the end if there was anything they could do about the setback, they said not to keep the landscaping they want to. I don't know if that's a compromise, you know, if the rain garden and the bike racks were moved somewhere else, you might be able to swing that building a little bit. I don't know how much room you're gonna pick up.
Well, the rain garden, I actually believe is mandated and is designed by our town attorney. The bike racks, well, I'm sure that's an amenity.
The rain garden needs to be in that spot?
Well, I don't know if it needs to be in that spot, but I...
Right, I'm not saying get rid of it, it's an important part of the thing. Bike racks are important too. I'm just saying they don't necessarily have to be right there where they're sort of deciding where Building B starts and ends.
I don't think there was another location because the, just my thoughts of this, the open area to the back of the property is also being used as a collection of water with a terrain, I'm not, Catch Basin, yes, Catch Basin. So I believe the problem is they just ran out of space.
And that's part of the problem, that, you know, it's a lot to be put into a small So, I don't know, keep going around, maybe somebody's gonna have a nice brainstorm here and say, yeah, that's what we're gonna do.
You can offer up a brainstorm, too.
If my brain was storming, I would share, believe me.
Mr. Fuller.
Yeah, and these aren't the easy ones, you know. Doing the sidewalks at nickel schools is an easy thing to do. Ice cream shops are easy. Breweries are exceptionally easy, push traffic. These are the tough ones, because you're not gonna have the ideal situation. So it really comes down to how close to as good as you're gonna get are you gonna reach? And that's really kind of, it's like that with most public policies, it's like that with a town or state budget, it's like that with figuring out city ordinances in state legislation. You're not gonna have an A++ all the time, you're not gonna have 100%. And so we have to look at the pros and cons, the good and the bad, and the indifferent. And we really have to weigh them on a scale, and if it weighs towards good, we should vote in favor of that. If it weighs towards the negative, we should vote to deny. And that's where, the more I think about it, there is a lot of good here. One good that hasn't been discussed yet is that it is gonna clean up the property. There is gonna be substantial cleanup, and yeah, there was industrial waste there, whether it's Raymark or somebody else. Someone took a dump truck there at 2:00 in the morning in 1972 or whatever and put whatever. You have someone willing to clean that up. That improves the quality of life, not just for the people who might live there, but for the people immediately around it, and also from an environmental standpoint, it's gonna mean clean air, green soil, clean water. And that's something that's been a long scar for this town. You know, Raymark is the worst thing that ever happened to this town, worse than AFCO shutting down, because AFCO's only that one area. Raymark, if we could find whoever's in that bloodline, believe me, I would get a pound of flesh from them, legal or otherwise, because these are the people that made Stratford not Fairfield. These are the people, and here's a chance to do something about it, to fix something up. So that really tugs at me in a very favorable way. Having the two right turn onlys as exits shows a lot of consideration from what the traffic on Ferry Boulevard would be. And here's the other thing, can we really hold a petitioner accountable to the state DOT's hypotheticals of a traffic light?
No, we can't. We've established that, we can't.
So what it really comes down to is, now looking at the negatives, and is there a way we could soften them some more? One of them being the aesthetics of the front building, to make sure that's the best quality synthetic material possible, to maybe take a look at some of the roofing materials so it's stipulated in a way that's more appealing to the neighborhood, because that is a primary corridor of Stratford, Connecticut. If exit 33 goes, knock on wood, hopefully it does, but don't hold your breath for the state, if Shakespeare Theater ever develops double knock on the wood, Ferry Boulevard's gonna be the place to go.
So, Mr. Fuller, how would you like to see this application go, or would you like to make improvements to it?
Definitely with the aesthetics, to enforce that, you know, that those buildings are made with external materials that are of high quality.
Okay, so that would be one stipulation.
Maybe we should discuss what sort of standard to use, but we should definitely take some of what Jay identified, but make sure that, and the petitioner said that they're looking to have quality materials there, but to enforce that, I think that would be important to look at, and the petitioner did omit to this, and I don't know if it's a stipulation or not, but some sort of parking price, you know, some sort of parking disincentive, whether it's done via lease or done by paid fee, month by month or lease by lease.
Parking fee, okay.
I don't know if that's something zoning could compel or stipulate, but it's something that should be looked at. Another negative is that Building B. If there was a way either to, and this is just me thinking, is there a way to move a story from Building B to Building C? Would Building C being at another story be less intrusive? I don't know. This is just me thinking right now, because if you look at it, Building C isn't surrounded by as many residential properties as Building B is. Building B has that whole homestead corridor right behind it. So that's the real crux. So I think that's where, if we could find some sort of solution with that, I think we solve the problem.
I don't think it's the height, though, now, it's the setback, and that, you'd have to move the whole building.
Well, I think the two are connected.
It's the setback that we're concerned with.
Well, it's the setback with the height.
Huh?
It's the setback with the height.
Well, I think the height is okay. I think the height, they took one level off. They were okay with that.
I think it's the amount of, I think it's the amount of density so close is the better way of saying it.
I don't think they're concerned with B and C, though. The neighbors weren't concerned with B and C.
Yeah.
Taken off, taken off one of the levels?
10 foot, they're not...
Well, that's the setback, though, that's what they're concerned with.
Well, you know what, if it was 5 foot, that'd be the setback. I'm not saying that.
Mr. Fuller, I don't want to take away from Mr. Fuller's time.
I think it was the totality of it, that it was with minimum setback that you have the massive height, too. If you take down a little bit of the height, it softens that 10-foot setback a bit.
If you all would indulge, I believe Mr. Owens would like to add to his testimony. It is, it would require a motion to waive the rules to allow him to speak if you wish to hear any more.
Madam Chair, I just want to ask the town attorney very briefly.
Sure.
Is this permissible, or would this be...
I would not do that, because then you're taking away the ability of anybody in opposition to comment. So the hearing is closed, it's closed. I think you need to act on what evidence you have in front of you.
Okay.
Also with, also in reference to the cleanup, one of the neighbors mentioned that the trees and stuff looked like they had mold on it or something was growing. So as Commissioner Fuller said, this is someone who's gonna clean up that area now, not two years from now, not five years from now.
Good point. It is a very positive. Mr. Knott, would you like to ask Mr. Florrick a question?
I would like to ask Mr. Florrick if it would be permissible for me to stipulate that we will remove one of the floors from one of the buildings in the rear, if that'll make a difference.
I don't think it's impermissible for you to suggest that.
Thank you. We would be willing to do that. We would be willing to do that.
Okay, we'll go around again. Mr. Giuliano? Hot your time, folks, it's quarter to 12.
Well, it is what it is. Remove a floor from Building C?
I think it's B.
Lost.
Yeah, I think it's B.
B, C, where are we?
B is the one that's consistent.
B is Homestead.
So which one, B or C?
It's B.
B?
I believe that's the one that most people have mentioned.
You know, it's a given, we heard before. Yes, he's done the best he could. We're all anxious for this TOD. And you know what? It's going to take time. You know what? It has great potentials and everything else. I'll give you what I don't like, and that's two things. One, I don't like the five-foot stories right on Ferry Boulevard. I don't care if it was I-95, whatever you want to call it. It doesn't fit the TOD. Look in your book, the TOD does not look like that. It's a lot different. And the infringement, now that they just lowered one, fine. Those are the two things I'm not liking about this whole thing like that. And I think we're pushing too far, the setback and the five foot.
So let me ask you, because I'm just trying to bear with me, just kind of focus our thoughts. Are you saying that you would like Building A, which is on the front on Ferry Avenue? Are you saying that that's too high? Or are you saying that if you had a choice, you wanted a floor taken off of-
Correct.
That or B or both? I'm trying to get a specific.
Take the five, the five stories is too much, and now that you took one off, the B is fine, but you still have the encroachment.
Okay. Are you still where you are? Well-
I, you know, I think the neighbor, the neighbors are fine with the front, with A, with the five feet. It still meets, it still is under regulation.
It meets it, it-
Now he just took off a whole floor on B.
Should have just tabled this.
We're not done yet, Mr. Rikusakis.
Well, I kind of wish that we had actually kept the hearing open, because we can't really be going back and forth with Mr. Knott and having him speak to us through Mr. Florick. He did say, remove a floor. He didn't say, remove a floor from one building and add it to another building. So if that's the case, then all of a sudden you're down to about 95 units, as I see. That changes-
I don't think he said add it to another.
I didn't think he said add it at all. He didn't say add.
I did not say add it. Remove one, period, no more, no adding.
So let me try to help in this regard. And if we can't get to a decision, then we'll move on and we'll table it. But I would like for us to try. We've worked very hard so far, and everybody's been really good-natured about trying to work together. If there was a motion hypothetically, that with the stipulations that Mr. Fuller just mentioned, which included parking fees, quality materials, just to summarize it, and we accepted the removal of one floor off of Building B to recognize the comments and the sensitivity of the neighbors in trying to, you know, come as close to their needs as possible, understanding that no plan is going to be perfect. How would that fit in terms of your thoughts? And is there a motion and a second to move forward with that? Otherwise, we'll go in a different direction. I'm trying to bring us to a decision one way or the other, folks.
I'm okay. If I had, forced right now, if I had to make a decision, I would lean in favor.
Mr. Giuliano?
I'm not ready right now.
Okay, Ms. Pepin?
I could make a decision.
Excuse me?
I could make a decision.
Mr. Rikusakis?
I'm a lot closer to a decision. I'm still, I mean, I did my math in my head, which is always a dangerous thing, and it wouldn't get the number of units down under 100. We would, it would be taking 14 units away. I believe it says 28 units in that building. So we would be down to 105. That's a lot closer to acceptable to me. I personally, I, I don't know that we're ready to make this decision. It's not an easy decision to make. It's one we want to get right. Getting it wrong will have lasting, and either decision could turn out to be wrong. We've just got to be very careful.
Well, I have two commissioners who are not ready to make a decision. And if that's the case, then we will table, and we can move it to an administrative session if you think you need more time on it. Myself, I will say that I could make a decision with that tonight. But I am sensitive to every commissioner having the ability to come to their own conclusion. So would you prefer a decision or a motion to table and move to another administrative session?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to table.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Okay, I'd like to try to finish the rest of our administrative session, other work. There's a few items that are time-sensitive on this. The approval of a minutes for June 13th.
A motion to approve, oh, go ahead, Commissioner.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of Ju-
By Ms. Pepin, second by Mr. Fuller, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. The campsite review for 382, that's tabled, so we won't discuss that. But the 955 Ferry Boulevard to Boat Road showman, Mr. Fuller?
It's not on the table, is it? We could just make a motion.
No, not, no, the 382 Ferry Boulevard-
No, I mean 955.
Yeah, 955, you can vote on it.
Oh, yes, so, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve 955 Ferry Boulevard Boat Room. CAMs are pretty straightforward. I don't know if Jay wants to speak to it, but-
I would just recommend that the CAM application be approved with conditions. The condition being that the application shall comply with comments from John Goucher, the representative from DEEP.
I'll make a motion to approve the CAM application for 955 Ferry Boulevard with the stipulations that DEEP gives it to thorough review.
Second by Mr. Giuliano. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, anybody opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you very much. Okay, we're not, there's no zoning enforcement, but we do have an accessory apartment application you all receive, 45 Bear Paul Road. Mr. Urbanski, you want to just talk to that very quickly to give some background?
Sure. On, let's see, June 6, 2017, the applicant went before the Board of Zoning Appeals seeking a variance of section, hold on a sec here, 4.1.6.14. I handed out tonight some of the comments from that BZA application. The variances were approved. The reason that the applicant had to go for variances was because the lot was undersized and the home was originally built non-conforming to today's standards. That presented a legal hardship. The Board of Zoning Appeals correctly voted to approve the variances. So they are basically in front of you today. They filled out their accessory apartment application, without getting too much into the personal conditions that the applicant is going through. The, due to illness, the property owner's daughter and brother and son-in-law will be moving in-state to live in the accessory apartment to care for the parents. So they meet all conditions. They meet all the requirements for the application and zoning regulations.
Madam Chair, we don't see it, sometimes these are also known as in-law apartments. Accessory and in-law are kind of used interchangeably. Usually see them like once or twice a year, and that's considered busy for these sorts of things. These are pretty rudimentary. This is kind of like the textbook case of an in-law apartment.
Very, very textbook. So is that a motion to accept?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the Bear Pearl Road in-law and accessory apartment application.
Okay, I need a second.
I'll make, I'll second.
By Ms. Pepin? Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. And the 382 Ferry Boulevard is still on the table, so we're not going to do that. And if everybody is willing, I'd like to forego the rest of our agenda.
A motion to adjourn, Madam Chair.
By Mr. Fuller?
I second.
By Mr. Paul, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all for being so patient tonight.